This is the Select Board Meeting of February 12th. We'll begin with roll call.
Our top president.
Gibson here.
Manish here.
Scotia here.
Capello here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval. Does anyone have any addition or corrections to the agenda? Make a motion to.
I move we the agenda is written.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Our top five.
Gibson, I.
Scotia.
Capello.
Public comment. Is there anyone who is here for public comment? Anyone online for public comment?
Don't see anything.
Okay, let's move along. Public hearing invited guests, the school board. I don't think there's anyone here from the school board this evening. Next invited guest is Keith Pratt and Keith is from Underwater Engineers and part of the Seacoast Water Study. And he's going to. So Keith, please come up. I don't know if that mic is on, so just make sure it's on. Oh, mine's not on.
There you go. Green means on.
Well, you guys are quick. He said I'd be right up and that was.
Hey. He's a man of his work.
Different than your time on the board? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's because I was chairman. I couldn't.
It's only you to blame.
Yeah, exactly. I can't blame anybody else. But yeah, I was Keith Pratt, President of Underwood Engineers and I live in town. I've been living in town for about 26 years now, I think. But I was on the board until 2013. So I've been on both sides, but we're a consulting firm that works mostly for towns and cities drinking water wastewater. And I'm here, Connor had approached me or ran into him at the municipal show and was talking about some of the water challenges and goals in the village and the community. And I said, well, you know, the states started a study to look at regional water in the seacoast. And Underwood was lucky enough to get that contract with the state. So I said, why don't I come down and talk to you about it? And I said, at that, at that time, though, unfortunately, Barrington was not part of that study area. But I was able to pull a little weight and get Barrington included. So I wanted to bring to you what this is and how it might actually be a good opportunity for the town. And also aligns with a lot of things I see you're doing with the Warren articles this year and even the TIF programs. There's a lot of good things that can come out of this. It's 100% funded by the state. There is no cost associated with the town. The town's, the state's going to ask for engagement from the communities that are involved. I'm here to sort of support that with you or encourage you to get involved. But I, I thought I had a couple other things to show you just to give flavor of what's happening here. Here, one of them I think you have.
You have this map.
That's two other attachments to that because I just wanted to give you a little bit of perspective of what's happening around. But the one graphic I think Connor gave you, and that's the, that's the Seacoast Study Area. And what's, and that's, and that's this one. And, and what's interesting about that chart is that the state has decided it's important to look at regional solutions throughout the state. And this is not the only area that the state's looking at. And this one's from Farmington, Seabrook, Epping, and now Barrington. And what they're, it's, it's a mutual aid emergency driven project, but they're also, it's one of the goals of the state is to try to reduce the number of small community water systems, transient, non-transient systems, because they become a nuisance. They're not as well managed. And Barrington's got quite a few of them. It's why it was easy for me to say, let's get Barrington included. So that's, that, that shows the, the study area as well as a lot of the community systems that exist. The next graphic, which I just pulled up because I wanted to show it to you, it's, it's not just talk. There's been a lot of money being put into regionalization and connecting water. And this, we're actually doing this project too, but we're putting a 16 inch transmission main across the bridges between Dover and Portsmouth. And the idea is now everybody's connected. So Seabrook is connected to Rochester when that project is done. And so mostly for an emergency basis. So, so the state's supporting most of these projects. I have another interesting one here. The second one is Stratum because I think Barrington's a lot like Stratum. And a lot of regional water systems, and if you've been through Stratum, there's a lot going on. Stratum is probably one of the water, one of the communities that are sort of in the middle of everything without any public water either. They have a bunch of community water systems. They unfortunately have a PFAS issue on their fire station, so they have some more drivers. But they're in the middle of, of some study works to do the same thing. They're, they're looking, they don't want to be in the water business, but they need to solve their problems. They're talking to Exeter Aquarium, New Market, and other communities to try to bring water. So there's, there's a, this graphic sort of gives you an impression of the things that they're looking at. The other one I, I gave you here is this, this, this Seacoast. It's called the. Call themselves the Commission on Drinking Water. So it's the Seacoast Commission on Drinking Water. That's been around for quite a while. I'm not sure if you know about this group. They meet regularly. It's an active group. I gave you this annual report from 2022. I couldn't find the 2023 one. I didn't have time to look at it, but I just, there's a lot of names on there, including former selectmen from Barrington that I, I noticed. So it's a, it's a kind of a who's who of some of the Seacoast people. But it was that group that supported this regional study. It was that group that drove it. It was that group that convinced DES to do this and to fund the work. And so I gave you that just for, for some information. But what the, what the study is, is it's, it's an update of something that was done in 2006, which I have this too. So in 2000, it's not the first time they've looked at it. And a lot of the interconnections that have been done now are just being updated from that report. And so what this, what the state is, 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 is doing is saying, okay, from a, from an emergency and, and mutual aid, what can we do? But more importantly, how can we just make water quality and water supply better for the region? And honestly, with a lot of the money that's coming out, a lot of it's been economically driven. They want to put some money into these things to help. Economic development. And so the goal really are those two things. And because Barrington sort of has a lot going on in the, in the 125 quarter, it seemed to make sense. Municipal water's not that far away. You've got Rochester on one side, clearly Durham now on the other because Durham brought water to Lee at that as well. And then you got, you know, water on Route 9. So a lot of what may be looked at here as part of this work is, is our task to look at community water systems nearby. How much does it cost to get water out here? Is that additional capital cost offset a lower, lower operating costs? And is it also provide better opportunity for economic development, TIF, TIF, TIF programs? And so I'm here to tell you that Underwood's involved with that. I happen to live in town. You're the first board that we've been in front of just because I live in town. And we haven't even got our contract signed yet, but we're getting the kickoff meeting next week. So I told Connor, I wanted to give you a little bit of what's happening and encourage you to stay engaged, stay involved, participate. It's not going to cost you anything. You're going to see a questionnaire come out at some point and it's going to ask you, does Barrington need water? Does Barrington want water? If so, how much? And I'd encourage you to sort of think about a long view on that because it's not going to cost you anything to find out what that might look like. The state's going to do that for you. It'll be the first step for something, you know, term for the town. So that's really what I had. I'd love to see if you had any questions on it.
So my, my first question is, why is the state looking for the regional solutions? Is it the PFAS? Is it because the surrounding communities need water? I mean, Barrington's water rich and good quality, although high in particulated iron. What, what, what's the reason that the state's looking at this?
Resiliency, redundancy, water quality, water supply. It's all of it. Seacoast has been targeted for supply improvements and source improvements in the past, but you're right. Seacoast has not been highest on the radar. There's been other higher priority projects, the South Central and the Southern New Hampshire Regional Water Project. I don't know if you're familiar with that, which were involved with that too. But that was bringing Manchester water to Plastow. That was driven by water quality, MTBE contamination. So if you think this is not possible, that Plastow got a brand new water system for basically $0.
And what water issues is Barrington facing that this would benefit us?
I've, I don't know that you have a lot of water issues. What I, what I'm saying to you is that I think the state is saying, we don't like community water systems. They're not, you know, they're not always well run. We got PFAS coming. We got other contaminants coming. I, I looked at the water quality in the area. 125 is clean. There's not a lot, there's not a lot of water quality issues, but there may be source issues. There may be limitations in our ability to encourage economic development. So there may be reasons you want to think about something long-term, long view. The state didn't have Barrington in the study, so they didn't see it as a high priority either.
Sure.
I pulled some strings to say, hey, you got, you got a lot going on on the Route 125 border. Why aren't we looking at this?
So I'll just share my very quick response until I receive more education is, I don't see Barrington as having a problem. When, when you interconnect with all of these other cities and towns, do we then invite a problem? Do we invite additional costs? Do we invite? So for, for me personally, it would take a lot to convince me that we would want to connect.
Well, just keep my, I'm not here to convince you on anything. I'm, I'm only asking for you to look at something that's being looked at for you with, with sort of a long view. And I can tell you, regionalization, it's, it's, it's more and more happening. And, and generally it's going to be a lower cost when you're working. But no, you're not, there, nobody's here saying you hush, shall do this or you, this will happen in the next year. This is five, 10, 15, 20 years.
If I may just add something really quick. So when Mr. Pratt mentioned we connected at the conference and I was talking to him about the development going on in town. Former Select Board Member, Select Board Chair, lives in town. And so we got talking about everything. We were talking about the Town Center and the Tax Increment Financing District. And I made it clear, I said, listen, residents spoke loud and clear that they don't want the town in the water business. And so we've kind of wiped that from our plans. And something that, that helped me understand the scope of not changing the perspective of the town getting in the water business. But if you look at this map, each one of those dots on the map is a community water system. So when Mr. Pratt's talking about a community water system, he's not talking about a municipally operated community water system. These are designated water systems that reach a level of utilization, gallons per day, whatever metric they use, to include our schools, the larger housing developments that are going on in town. And so when, when we had some of the projects happening in the Town Center area, the state actually approached the town and said, hey, look, you don't need to get the water business, but you ought to work with these private developers to explore a way that they can connect their own water systems, the town not necessarily involved, but for that resiliency and redundancy. And so I think our, having an open mind to what recommendations or what might come of this, doesn't mean that the end game is the town getting in the water business. But for the many, I mean, dozens of water systems, community water systems that we have in the town, having a spotlight, state-funded spotlight shine down on what does that future look like and what opportunities for interconnectedness exist, whether the town's involved or not, is, is good for Barrington, in my opinion. Just make sure that microphone's pointed to you. It looks like it's pointed off to the.
It is. Hello? Can you hear me? Yes. I loved your map, but I didn't quite understand it. Can you identify or give definitions of what is it, what these three dots are?
Well, those represent the, the water systems that the state regulates, main monitors. And you've got community, they're all small, like a Swains Lake would be in there. Actually, they're big too. I mean Dover on, in the middle, that's the Dover Water System. But these are all the systems that the state's paying attention to. They have to be sampled, watch for water quality. It's your schools. It's your restaurants. It's, it's, it's anybody that comes in and, and uses or drinks that water. You've got people that live there as a community water system and you have people that just pass through on a, for a meal. That's a non-transient system. I don't know how many Barrington has, but there are a lot. There are a lot.
What's the difference between a transit, non-community and non-transit, non-community?
I think one would be like a gas station where you use the bathroom. Another might be a restaurant where you sit down, have a meal.
Okay.
You know, but you don't live there. Campgrounds, I think are non-transient. You might be there for a couple of weeks or a month, that kind of thing. But the, the point only is, is that we've been working in a lot of communities and all of a sudden something like PFAS comes along. Now, Barrington, I haven't seen any information to suggest we have an issue here, but the levels are dropping. Arsenic is dropping. You know, manganese is becoming a more regulated contaminant. If manganese becomes regulated, you may find that we're going to issues town than otherwise. So it's, it's, this is just the opportunity to sort of position yourself. If that next thing came along, it becomes one more tool in your toolbox to look at.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I, I think this is probably an excellent point because some of the, especially some of the really high-tech industrial development that we've looked at, chip manufacturers, that sort of thing. They're a big concern and one of the reasons that we don't get a lot of support from the state is we don't have water and sewer available. So I think this study sounds like it would be a very helpful, helpful thing for us to be part of.
You said arsenic levels were dropping. Do you mean the acceptable levels are being lowered?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it affect any public waters that people are able to swim in now and kayak and do their thing? Would they plenty water out of those that would, you know?
No.
Supposedly we're not supposed to swim down at the Madberry Reservoir, but.
Yeah, it won't change that and it won't make things, you know, more restrictive.
I don't.
No, it's not intended to. Really what it is, is sort of like a reallocation. Where's the best way to get the water and get it to where it's needed?
So they might find a, like a, a site and then be like, hey, here's a good spot for a well, pump the well, water down and there goes the Seabrook. Or something like that.
Well, it's, it's, it could if it was an emergency, but you know, one of the things I was talking to Connor about is there is water here. There are aquifers here. And if in the long view, there was an opportunity to connect to Rochester or Dover, because that was a better way to go, there's a source here too. So there's a give and take. You're not just, it's, it's, they would get, you know, it would be a win-win for both parties. And Stratum is, is, doesn't want to be in the water system, but they have aquifers too. And so they're bringing wells to the table. So there's, you know, there's that opportunity. But it's a lot of this, I mentioned in the beginning, just don't forget, a lot of it's economically driven too. I mean, there is the opportunity to, to now have more water available. And I know there, you know, there are certain places here. Swains Lake, I know, has had their challenges, their water.
They have a new water village.
You've been mentioning Swains Lake. I just wanted to make sure that their district as a, kind of their own entity is, is included in this consideration.
Barrington is included as a whole. So, yep. And I'm not, the state's not looking at every community water system. It would just be too, too, so there's a strategy in how they're approaching this to see if there's some benefit coming to Barrington first place.
Is there a similar group doing a similar study on wastewater needs that kind of overlays this?
Well, it's interesting you say that. That was done 15, 20 years ago, when the nitrogen limits came out in the bay. That regionalization there too. Barrington said, eh, not interested then either. But that kind of went away and said, everybody sort of built their own treatment plants. The regional solutions kind of fell off. But there was, there is a study out there that shows it. I think to a pipe 25, if I can remember right.
One of the carryovers from that work is, and I don't know the, I forget the name of it, but there's an organization, a collective that is focused on the Great Bay estuaries and, and nitrogen levels and pollution. And they actually invited Barrington and it was kind of last minute. I think we might have not have been on the email list at first, but they invited Barrington to participate. And I talked to the president or of the nonprofit or whoever it was. And I said, well, you know, Barrington has mostly open drainage and, you know, we have a lot of conserved land, which helps offset. And, you know, we're the source of water for a lot of things. And he said, yeah, no, you know, I'm, he said, I'm not saying that Barrington should come, participate in the conversations because Barrington's part of the problem. But those things that Barrington is doing is benefiting these other communities and that should be part of the conversation. The fact that Barrington can serve 500 acres of land in 2023 is helping the greater Seacoast area because of the nitrogen leaching into the estuaries. And, you know, I'm sure you, you saw in the news, the, you know, I think New Market, Durham, Dover, Portsmouth, we're, we're kind of all entangled in this nitrogen in Great Bay federal requirement kind of, they've resolved. I don't, I don't know how they resolved it, but they resolved that because they have problems as contributing to this. But Barrington's kind of contributing to the solution, not on purpose. But anyway, so that's an interesting conversation that we're following also.
Well, all I would encourage is to just stay involved, pay attention to it. That's really all I wanted you to do. And my advice is when you see the questionnaires, just think long view. There's absolutely no commitment. If you say, I want 200,000 gallons a day, I want to consider what 200,000 gallons a day of water in Barrington. Zero commitment, but you would be getting something that I think would be useful for the town.
Is part of the study, the surface area of impermeable surface as it exists within each of these municipalities?
No, not this. That's out of the scope of this one.
Gotcha. What's your plan for keeping us informed? I think we don't know when to talk to you.
Yeah, my notes are, look for it. We will be reaching out, probably through Connor. And there will be a questionnaire, most likely, that, that will have a series of questions. I'm not sure on the timing of that, but I'll make sure Barrington and Connor has it. And then if we don't hear from you, we'll make sure we remind you too. But it will be in the form of us reaching out to you to make sure that you're included with whatever thoughts you have.
Any sense of how long this study's going on?
It's about a year. So the state wants the kind of the draft to be done in about a year from now. So I wouldn't, don't expect something next week. You'll start seeing something in the next few months.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure, you will keep our interests at heart.
Bet. Any questions, Connor, let me know.
Absolutely.
Glad I could share that with you.
So next on the agenda is a report from the Energy Committee. And to the committee, I just want to say thank you for what we received today because over the weekend I was trying to read all the, you know, the requests for proposals that came in and make a chart of who and why. And when I saw this today, I was.
That was our job. So Paul Panish, Chair of Barrington Energy Committee.
Jack Bingham, Energy Committee.
Although I'm taking the call in Bergstrom. I hope you didn't see that version of the document. So the main thing I want to do here today is answer questions. Connor, is it okay if I?
Yes.
Okay. So the main thing I wanted to do was answer questions that you might have. I mean, as you know, back in late November, early December, you charged us with creating an RFP, distributing the RFP, collecting the bids and evaluating those bids and making a recommendation to the committee. That's what this report is about. This table here is an attempt to consolidate the information from all the bids, add a little bit to what was basically in there and make it more understandable mainly to our committee so that we could evaluate it as a group, go over it, explain it to the committee members. So quickly to go over this with you, what it does is it takes all, most of the contents of the bids and boils them down. So obviously company names, what they're charging us for the gross cost of the system, the equipment that they're planning on using, how many pieces of equipment there are, the geometry that they were going to use as a layout on the roof and the warranty information. Jack added some additional information that is extremely valuable in the evaluation process. He normalized the kilowatt hours per kilowatt for each of the bids and represented that as a percent, where the lowest one was 100%, the others are represented as increments above that. That was one of the primary criteria that we used in our first stage of eliminations. We had, and this was based on Jack's knowledge, my knowledge of the site and what would be good layout criteria. We had specific ideas on what that would be. We felt that in some cases where those were not aligned to, that the choices that were made were poor. And that made us question the technical capabilities of the people and companies involved. And they may have had reasons to do that, but it was not obvious to us. So that allowed us to eliminate four companies from the group. And beyond that, we had some other issues with equipment. One of the vendors was using Tesla inverters, which we know nothing about and we have been unable to find much information about. We could have derived that information, assuming that they were using similar equipment to what is in their battery systems, but we don't know that. So we were uncomfortable with that. There was the additional issue that we really would like this equipment to be inside. Though all equipment is outdoor rated, it's not generally a good idea to have it exposed to the elements if you don't have to. So that allowed us to rule out another company and we were left with two at that point. And those are the, and those were the recommendations that we made to the board. One, we recommend more highly. It's the lowest cost and we have more faith in the equipment that's being presented there. That was Mainz Electric with the SMA Sunny Boy inverters. They were going, they are, is it four units, Jack? Or four, there's four units, which will go inside the electrical room. Revision Energy was also a runner. They were one of, they were the second most expensive bid. And they were using equipment that has a record that we are not very impressed with. It's used very widely. Most people that you know that have solar installations probably do have solar edge inverters. They do seem to have some technical problems with them. They have relatively high failure rates. This would probably be covered under warranty. However, the timeframe for replacement has been an issue. And as a result, that knocked them down to second place and our recommendation went with Mainz. The other thing that I wanted to indicate to you, because it's probably somewhat confusing, is the break even analysis that we did. So when we presented our initial very crude spreadsheet back in November, we had estimated a break even point of something like seven years. And we had an estimate of what would happen to energy prices that was a lot more pessimistic than has turned out. So we were saying 16 cents per kilowatt hour. We probably should have looked at the power purchase agreement at that point in time because it was already in place, but we didn't do that. And, and we came up with the estimates we, that we did. I think we more or less stuck our thumb in the air to come up with a break even estimate on that, didn't we?
More or less.
Okay. So we didn't go through this at any rate. I wanted to present to you both using, you know, that estimate that we had made for power prices back in November, early December, as well as the current power purchase agreement prices and give you the break even estimates on that. You can compare this, the, I think the only bid that did a careful analysis on break even was Revision. So you can go in and compare our results with Revision's results. Realize that, that their estimates were actually made on the PPA that we, maybe you can clear this up, Connor. We appear to have had a change in the power purchase agreement price of power between August and December.
Right. So we were on, I forget the exact dates, but we were on default power for a period of time and then we entered a 12-month contract with one of the energy suppliers.
Nextera.
Nextera in, late in the year. I think in December. I think it, I think it's December to December was, was the rate. And there was one additional change because originally EverSource changed some of our meter numbers in this building from our temp service to this building. And so one of the meter numbers wasn't picked up in the original contract, but we got that added. added. So that would be the rate change.
That's more complicated than I thought it was, to be honest, but the long and short of it is that the, the, the energy price that Revision based their analysis on was actually lower than the energy price that we now have.
Right.
Which I believe was as of December.
Correct.
So it went from 9.44 cents to 9.91 cents now. I presented both of those values in the tables that I have here. If you're interested in playing with these numbers, we can provide you with these tools to do that. What I hope to make clear here was that the generation estimates are critical in estimating break even and they vary quite widely. Mainz, as I said before, had the most conservative generation estimates given the array size and they went all the way up and we had less faith in the technical capabilities of the companies that had very high generation rates. You can play with, with these numbers a lot and the break even point will change significantly on that basis. We think, or I think that the actual break even will probably fall somewhere between the two values that I presented here. And just to sum up, those were, I have to look at it because I don't remember. So using the more recent numbers for power costs, we would expect Mainz Electric should become cash flow positive after about nine years and Revision after about 12. And that was pretty much it. So if you had any questions, I'd be glad to answer them or Jack.
I defer to you.
Could you share the cost of an inverter? If we, if we went with Mainz and we had to replace that after the 10-year warranty versus the 12-year warranty and it's just when we finally have covered the cost of the project?
The latest price on the new Sunny Boys is $1,600 or $1,700.
Oh, nothing outrageous. Gotcha.
No, it's, it's really a very small percentage of a system.
It is. Yeah, thank you.
One thing please keep in mind, we neglected to specify a snow, snow retention system for the roof and since there are walks all around the building, that is important. We were reminded of that by both Revision and Mainz and we will have to add that in as a cost.
And that cost was estimated at about 5,000.
Outrageous. Gotcha.
Assuming voters agree to the community power agreement, would that have any effect on these numbers?
It doesn't have any effect on these numbers. It would have an effect on the participation of the building in the community power program at its outset. We would recommend that you not enroll in that program. You would not be automatically enrolled for this building and we would not recommend that you manually enroll until such time as there's a resolution to the conflict with the utilities and the community power organization.
Relative to net metering?
Right.
Okay.
And the town currently has a one-year contract for its current power, so the recommendation is going to be that we would get installed probably closer to the end of the contract.
Right. And we're actually hopeful that there might be some additional grant money that would be available and it may take a while to figure that out. So delaying this a bit, if you choose to move forward, would not be a terrible idea.
So what's, what's the maintenance from Mainz going to be like on the system? Do they have a yearly program or say an inverter goes down or fuse goes down and then we're not producing power inadvertently? You know, we end up getting charged more? Who's going to track that monthly? Are the maintenance staff, are they versed in, in dealing with the issues that can come from solar?
The first thing that I should make clear is these systems are generally extremely low maintenance and highly reliable, but beyond that, you know, Jack is really the expert here.
So as part of the application for the New Hampshire State rebate, every contractor has to warranty the system for five years. So after five years, all of these vendors offer maintenance contracts. I don't happen to know what Mainz is. We can certainly get you a number for an annual contract.
Yeah, it's just something, it's on the backside of it. Nobody thinks about it. You know, and I really like this, but in my eyes, I think, you know, the community solar project, I think would be a little bit more beneficial to the town. But until we can get a weather tight public safety building, I'm probably can't do this yet.
One thing I'd like to point out about community solar is you lose the advantage of behind the meter generation, which is significant.
So would you explain that?
You want to go, Jack?
So your electric bill essentially is four components. Here's the energy or the meter charge, describing meter. There's the energy charge, which is the actual delivery of electricity. There's the transmission and delivery charges, which you've seen on your bill, and then there are various taxes. Any energy that goes into the building that's consumed within the building takes all the transmission charge, all the delivery charge and all the taxes and fees. So essentially you're getting retail value for the power. Any power that goes out through the meter is excess that's not used at the time it's created, generates credits and you lose credit on the taxes and fees and you lose 75% of the delivery charge. So there is a spreadsheet. Are we giving that to them?
You're welcome to use it. You mean your, the spreadsheet?
Yeah. We actually, we actually have a spreadsheet that, that takes the monthly production of a system and, and making the assumption that we're going to use 78% of the power in the building and 22% will be excess. It actually calculates those costs based on all the factors. And, and any commercial customer is a little more complicated because the delivery and transmission charges are tiered. So the first 500 costs something, the next thousand costs something else and the balance costs something beyond it. So the spreadsheet calculates that whole thing and you can play with the value of electricity and figure out what the, what the benefits are. Pretty detailed.
Do you know if they just use the, the online applications to, for like the shading analysis and whatnot?
Well, I don't think anybody's actually done a shading analysis. I, I think what, what needs to be done, assuming you pick a vendor, is someone's going to spend a lot of time up on the roof, measuring the roof exactly to figure out the best layout and then taking, taking readings and determining what the value is. And one of the reasons for doing it is there's a potential grant that requires 80% insulation value. So we'd want to try and make sure we can hit 80% to get the grant. So.
With an east-west system, that might be hard to do.
Right.
This is the tool that, that Jack is talking about that was developed that would allow that kind of analysis of what the energy cost is for behind the meter and what the energy cost is for what's pushed out onto the barriers conditions that you can put in.
Work on that table.
Years of pain.
Luckily I was able to use it.
But it's really the only way to get, to take a, a year's worth of production and put a real value on it.
You know, as well as I do, you can plant a pretty picnic, but you can't predict the weather.
That's right. This year's, or last year's a great example of that.
Exactly. You know, we, we, hey, it's not doing, hey, you know, we've had two weeks of great days. It's like Seattle, you know?
Now, there's a general assumption, any of these things, there's a, there's a 10% weather variable from year to year that it really is what it is.
Can you get that printed out? I can't read it that fast.
Oh, this, this one, if you believe, if you want to use this one, it will take you a while to figure it out.
There's more down below.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there, it's two parts. It's the behind the meter and the, the energy pushed out onto the grid.
I think showing it was just illustrated that there are a lot of variables, but the cost, the benefit to a behind the meter.
If somebody wants to walk through that, I'll be happy to walk them through it.
So we have to decide how to proceed.
We have the money.
So when the select board first reviewed the, the proposal, the Energy Committee recommended we should put solar on the town hall, about a seven-year payback. And at that time, the, the options the select board were presented with were a warrant article to fund the project or funding available from the ARPA balance, which uncommitted is about 400,000. And so since that time, the select board said, put an RFP together, let's see some specific details. We knew when we made that decision that one option that was going to be off the table was asking the voters in 2024. So if the select board wanted to move forward with this now, the select board would have to commit the funds from the ARPA balance towards the project. And so it sounds like, and I don't know what the timeline would be, but it sounds like probably waiting until next March is too long. I know you said there was some benefit in waiting in terms of securing some of the additional grants and waiting for the contract to be.
So there are a couple of factors here. One is the bids are only valid for a limited amount of time.
Oh, most of them said 90 days.
Right. That's what I saw.
So that's one issue. However, the, the other issue is that we are investigating other grants. They may not be available right now and may come available as the year goes on. They may not.
Also a little more time for technology too.
That I don't think is a factor.
Make a motion. Contract. Understanding that you got to grant money is.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't that be an appropriate way to approach it?
So what, what I think that you could do is, and I think this is true not just for the other grants, but for the grants and rebates that exist that we know about that are, that are more definite, is you could authorize utilization of up to the full contract amount with the expectation that grants and rebates received would, would return to that balance for, you know, to replenish the ARPA funds from what was.
And that would be important because the, the tax credit, I believe, which you would get as a direct payment, that won't come until next year, right?
Yeah, the way that process works down is a little more clarity is that you file when the project is complete and you get payment just like you were a taxpayer at the end of your fiscal year, you can apply to get the payment.
I don't know how the state would handle that.
It's a two to three month turnaround.
So I know somewhere here's the final figures, but.
They're up on the, the screen.
So the total cost for the Mainz Electric, which was the recommendation was $106,490.
So I would make a motion to approve the expenditure of $106,490, am I saying that correctly? From ARPA funds with the understanding that if grants are achieved specific to this project, that they return to the line item for.
Um, could I add?
Within a 12-month period of time.
I don't know what you. Snow retention system, which will.
Oh, I would modify my motion then to include another 5,000. So $111,490 to be expended from ARPA for the purpose of solar on the town hall with the understanding that if in 12 months' time, we have received any grant dollars for this project, they would be returned to the ARPA line item.
So I have a question about the funding. So if the money would be returned after the deadline for ARPA funds, it just go into the general fund?
Not necessarily. We'll double, I can double check with the auditor, but generally how grants, which a grant or a rebate under generally accepted accounting practices would be viewed is as in a money in and money out account, so not necessarily the general fund. So that we would be able to encumber those dollars just like we would ARPA dollars. Remember, we have until 2026 to spend the ARPA funds. It's just until 2024 that they're committed. So I think by spending the money, it's committed. If we get a rebate, then we would be able to spend those dollars with the rest. I can confirm exactly how that would work. We wouldn't lose the money. The worst case scenario, we would lose the ability to spend the money. It would just go to offset.
Wait a minute.
It would just go to offset taxes. It would just come in as, as general revenue to offset taxes. So, but I can get a definitive answer on that.
Do you think there's any grants that you'd be looking at after 2020? If we approve this? I'll second that.
Another discussion?
I think it should go to the voters. And I know it's going to be another 12 months, but you know, I think, you know, it's, you know, like, you know, we have to be committed with the money, but you know, what if something else comes up? Is this, is this a want or is this a necessity for the town? Are we having a hard time paying our electrical bills and this is going to help us out? Or is this going to offset to free something, some more funds up down the road? Just a couple of thoughts for discussion.
For me personally, I feel like it sets a very important example as a municipality that we're focused on clean energy and we're, we're utilizing that as well as looking towards reducing costs long-term.
I think when we were at the deliberative, or the, actually the weekend before, we were at our booth and hearing from the voters at the primary, that there was a lot of people saying that they would like to see solar and, and that there was, I think it does send a good message. I think that many municipalities across the state are already doing it across many of their buildings. And when we look at the regional grid infrastructure and the growing demand for electric and the, the challenge of blackouts and all of the, the demands for energy, I think that it's one way of doing our part to try to ease on that burden so that the critical infrastructure has the power they need during the peak times.
So in addition to going on the backside of maintenance, I know you guys didn't include that, but you're going to remember, I mean, we use a small company like Go Solar. They're out of business and you know, we get people that call all the time, hey, somebody else put this in and nobody wants to come work on it. So you know, are we going to get into a system five years from now, hey, it's all covered? Or you know, it, things change, things happen. Then are we going to be tied to try and find somebody to come in and work on this and/or how expensive is that going to be?
Isn't that kind of true of any mechanical issue we might, I mean, we could have the same thing happen with a heating system or the, the security systems we put in. Any of that could ever, I mean, we, we always chance that in a, in a, you know, in a capitalist society, capitalist society where, you know.
I think where all the components can be specific to the system sometimes. I think you may have some challenges there, but I mean, if you have a train HVAC unit, you know, they've been in business a long time or whether it's a Siemens electrical panel. You know, hey, you're going to be able to get breakers for that, you're going to be able to have this down the road. Or hey, it's going to cost so-and-so to come in yearly, do a check, check furnace underneath the, you know, if.
What you're saying, you have a concern with this particular equipment that Mainz is offering?
Uh, don't, just saying that the maintenance down the road. So you know, is somebody going to come say if there's swirls on the roof, is there going to be a critter fence installed around it at another time? You know, are they going to go up, say, hey, look, or come read the inverters or read it remotely? You know, because it's like the same thing when I asked the library, I go, hey, great, you want to do this building, but what's going to be the yearly cost of the town? It's great to get it and, and to have the ability to go get it, but what's it going to cost further on down?
Yeah, I think Mainz is probably pretty, pretty viable company, but I think Jim's point may be this is kind of new, relatively new equipment. We don't have long backups in this knowledge of this. And $111,000 even coming out of anyone's fund ARPA or anyone else is a pretty good chunk of change for our community.
Would it make people feel better if we explored the cost of the maintenance agreements and had those dollar figures? I mean, we do have a little legal room here before you'd have to start over, so I mean, we could meet again about this.
Can we, I want to address one concern here. So we're really only talking about two components here. We're talking about solar panels and inverters. I've been doing this for about 10 years now and I own, I don't know, 10,000 of them. I've never replaced a solar panel, ever. Inverters are things that no one opens up and repairs. They get swapped out. It's really a simple process. It's not, this is not something that, I mean, I, I actually, the furnace thing is an interesting example because I've talked to any number of people in the last three months who have furnace systems that they can't fix because no one knows how to repair them. Fortunately, no one's going to open up an inverter. They're going to find out that it's not working. They might call tech support, they'll pull it off and they'll put a new one on. So I think that the maintenance issues are not, I know it's a scary new thing, but the maintenance issues are really not as dire.
Let me jump in here for a moment. These have really become commodity items. I've been off-grid for 25 years. And in that, even when I went off-grid, it wasn't building block, but it was getting there. The changes that have taken place since then, these are, these systems are, are so simple. It is easy for someone else to jump in. It is easy for someone else to jump in and take care of, you know, any replacement issue that would come up. I mean, if you have to replace panels, the problem is far more that panels change with time. So in five years, the panel geometries that will be available won't be the same.
But not in one year, right?
Not in one year, no. It's, they're available for a few years. But the failure rates on this thing, on panels are remarkably low. And you can always just pretty much, it won't look as good, but you can replace a panel with something that doesn't look like the old one.
There were many portfolios from these vendors of municipalities all around the state that are doing this, have done this. And I don't know, I've not heard any municipality complain and say, I wish we didn't install it. So.
I'm often jealous when we drive through Brentwood and we see their solar panels. And I think, when are we going to do this?
Should I call both?
Sure.
She already called it, she's seconded it.
Hard to call five.
It gives an eye.
Scotia, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you just heard, so I'm just curious. I just want to know more, Jim, because background did this. So you heard the part about them. Tell me more.
I think this, and please, I am a supporter of solar, okay? But I don't think that right now residents I've been speaking to have, that's their biggest concern right now because there's some other duty items that we have to take care of. We have security issues at buildings. We have, you know, a leaky public safety building. And for me to make a decision over that to this, I think my priorities are just a little bit different than the rest of the board.
I hate to agree with. Whoa, did you just kind of vote no? I vote no.
The culture though. I would also just add that I'm certainly not choosing this over security. I do think there are adequate funds for the security needs.
I would agree.
At most for our town and the example that benefit of having solar.
Great, thank you.
Connor, I will need to talk to you about responses to the. We'll do that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
This is, this is the rebuttal of those that say that the select board is a unanimous rubber stamp, right? You know?
I, quite frankly, I'm always grateful that there's various opinions and perspectives and backgrounds. And who says that about us? No.
Sorry to bother, but it looks like you're still sharing. If you, I don't know if I can easily stop you from sharing.
Even with my computer.
While they're going through that technicality.
Can we accept the consent agenda?
Yes, let's look at the consent agenda. Did you just make the motion?
I'm moving, approve the consent agenda.
A through N?
A through N.
A through N.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh, are you leading?
No, I seconded it.
No, I actually thought she said.
I thought you were looking at me as a.
Bye.
Yeah, I did.
Manchurkai.
Scotia.
Happy L O I. Moving on to appointments. Appointments for terms expiring in 2024. Select Board appointments expire on March 31st each year. Appointment terms are staggered, reserved and institutional knowledge on each board and committee. Each year, by the last select board meeting in March, the select board is asked to consider appointments and reappointments for terms expiring. So we'll see those coming before us. We'll review appointments and reappointments starting at February 26th and we'll plan to make final appointments on March 4th. And then I think this is Connor, on behalf of the town, I'd like to extend my appreciation for the care and dedication of Barrington's many citizen volunteers. And actually that comes from the board. Staff reports.
Thank you. February work anniversaries, first meeting in February. I'd like to recognize James Jenison, who's currently our deputy building inspector. And as you know, upon John's retirement, will become our building inspector in just a couple of months. John Sardina was hired as a certified officer this time last year. So celebrating his one year work anniversary. Moving on, deliberative session review. So deliberative session was on two Saturdays ago. On February 3rd, we have the video posted online, barrington.nh.gov/2024deliberativevideo. It's also on our YouTube channel. There were two amendments, as the select board is aware. There was a lot of discussion about the town center tax increment financing district. It seemed like most of the residents were in support of the idea, but found it confusing. And so there were, the amendment that came forward on that was focused primarily on further describing what the town was doing. In so doing, the amendment identified the purchase of the lot in addition to the establishment of the district. And Article 44, which was the petitioned article for a joint advisory budget committee, was amended for, from five members to seven members. I will note at the school deliberative session on Saturday, that was the article that consumed the most of the conversation. And after a voice vote passing that amended language, there was a secret ballot where the amended language was defeated. So the original petition language will remain on the school ballot. The school board and their, a member of their advisory budget committee spoke to their perspective of why they felt this current process was better than the proposed process. And so that video is online as well, if you're interested in watching that. Just a couple of pieces of information, not only for the select board, but for members of the community. When we're talking to residents about the town warrant of 44 articles, we have the voter guide, which is a 40 page document that details each warrant article, an explanation and the recommendations, and barrington.nh.gov/2024voterguide. We have the warrant webpage, which is the electronic version of that document, but expands greatly into each one of those topics. We have the budget webpage, which is, comprises 400 pages of everything that we did during the budget process, but also summary documents within that. The Barrington Library Foundation webpage has details about the library project. The two rec articles being the Community Center Investment Program and the Barrington Town, Barrington Commons and Town Center Tax Increment Financing District. There's a webpage 2024 Rec Articles on that. We also have the Tax Increment Financing District webpage. The process of the Highway and Transfer Station Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. We have a webpage dedicated to that process and the details. So interested residents can find information about that. Similarly, Community Power, that's Article 39, an effort of the Energy Committee. There's a webpage dedicated to that for describing details. We have details about the Waste Management Contract and how we arrived at the idea for a revolving fund for the transfer station that allows us to be prepared for the contract increases there. There's a candidate forum, which was, is scheduled for Thursday, February 22nd at 6:30. I just heard back from the moderator this evening before the meeting and he confirmed that the, at 6:30, the uncontested races, those candidates will have an opportunity to introduce themselves. That will last for about 15 minutes. And then at 6:45, the three school board candidates have agreed to participate. And that is Rick Walker, Tim Hatfield, the incumbent, and Jason Baker. So they will participate in a candidate forum from 6:45 until 7:30. And then at 7:30, the two candidates for select board, Robert Russell and Dan and Manchreck, will participate in the candidate forum until eight o'clock. So if you're interested in the uncontested races, show up at 6:30. School board, show up at 6:45. Select board, show up at 7:30. It will be available online as well and the, for virtual participation and we'll have a recording available. I also included the link to the absentee ballot request. So the steps that we've taken to inform residents, which we're going to touch on this again in a minute, but we have the election important date sign down in the town center. We had our information table at the presidential primary. We have the deliberative session signs up around town, letting folks know of the two deliberative sessions. After the non-snowstorm, I guess it kind of seems like now, the, those signs will be replaced with the vote signs informing residents of the vote on March 12th. Of course, we have the voter guide. We've started the What's That Warrant Article Facebook feature, where every day we feature the details of a warrant article. I'd encourage residents to share that with folks that you think might be interested to help facilitate discussion and send any questions to ask at barrington.nh.gov. We finalized, and I included in your packet, a copy of the postcard that will go hit mailboxes on February 28th. So this includes details of people coming out to vote and some of the main articles, including the town and school operating budgets, the library project, the town center tax increment financing district, community power and others. The property owners within the proposed tax increment financing district receive a letter informing them of exactly what it means. There's always a lot of misconception about how owning property in the district may change your taxes. It doesn't, everybody pays the same taxes, but we'll demonstrate what that means to them. Concluding this item in preparation of the ballot session, members should communicate with the chair when they're available on March 12th to be at the polls and oversee the election. We'll take that information, prepare a schedule and then appoint pro tem appointments in the place of any absences. And then, yeah, the webpage for the candidate forum is barrington.nh.gov/2024candidateforum.
Ian McGovern, did we receive any feedback from the state arrived at our last election for the presidential election? Did we receive any feedback, positive or negative, from that audit?
They expressed no concerns. I don't think they typically express praise. Usually it's, if you're doing something wrong, you'll hear from us. We did not hear anything.
Very good.
Good question, please.
I would point out there, as I, says I can't be monitored for this thing because I'm on the ballot.
Right.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or questions about those details? Covered a lot of material. Okay, moving on, the annual report. So Tiffany is fervently working on the town report with her partner in crime, Crystal Murky. And an important component that kicks off the town report is the annual report from the select board, which really revisits the work of the select board in the prior year and gives a nod to the upcoming year and what folks will vote on. So I have the draft for your review tonight and I'm happy to incorporate any changes and we'll get this into the final draft of the town report upon approval.
Did anyone have any changes to the report?
We've done a lot.
Yes, sure.
Keeping it to three pages was a challenge. I'm not kidding. So this is the sixth, the sixth report I've prepared. And I keep a list, I start with a bullet point list of, that I maintained throughout the year of everything that we've done. 2023, the list just kept going. There's the number of things not included in this that the select board accomplished or challenges that we faced and overcame. There's a lot going on in Barrington. So kudos to the volunteers that made it all happen. Okay, moving on from that then. Strategic planning update. So obviously we just went over all the things that we've done. Many of those items came as a result of our strategic planning session on December 12th, joint meeting with the Advisory Budget Committee. There are some things that we identified as possibilities at that session that we need to decide if we're going to do or not. And so I've already made some decisions on some things that are either free or don't take a lot of time or effort. But some things that will cost money or will involve the select board, I want you to be involved in making the decision. So first, as it relates to signs, I told you the signs that we have up. One thing that we talked about is that there are a few location specific warrant articles that we could use signs to help draw attention to those topics on the warrant. For example, the library, which the foundation is kind of already solving this problem. They've purchased a sign to go over the old Frisbee sign that will say this is on the ballot. And so I don't think we need to worry about that one. The Community Center Investment Program. We could have one or a couple of election style signs at 105 Ramsdale Lane that says, hey, check out Article 22. It could, you know, make changes to this building. Article 24, this is the Barrington Commons Town Center Tax Increment Financing District. We could put a couple of signs up on the property, on the frontage on 125, the frontage on Route 9 and maybe over by the post office informing residents that this is Article 24. Here's where you find additional information. Another idea that I had was at the public safety building, Article 33 is the design funds for that building. And so if we had an election style sign or two at the public safety building that said, hey, research Article 33, this is design money for this building. I don't know if that's going a little bit overboard on, on signs and, you know, getting people to look in too many different directions. But I'm looking for the select board's decision on whether or not we want to do some or all those additional signs to the ones we've already done.
I would suggest, well, the TIF is going to be a real hassle just explaining that. But sign may help. I'm not sure the one about the public safety building is necessary.
Okay. Thoughts?
I think tax incremental financing is still throwing people for a loop. And I think that we need to do our best to get information out there, whether we use social media and a video, whether. Give examples of other communities that have successfully used tax incremental financing so that people understand we're not inventing some, some new methodology just to obtain that 13.5 acres. But that is throwing people for a loop.
I think keep signage simple, like preserve our town center, vote yes on.
Can't vote, can't say vote yes, right? Yep.
Well, it could just say cite.
Support our.
It could say cite of proposed Barrington Town Center, right?
And that's what we did last year.
Barrington Commons, yeah.
I think if you posted the signs on there, this is Article 22, check it out. I mean, that's, it's almost like an Easter egg hunt, right? Oh, what's that? Go online. But I think also in addition to what Tracy said, you know, we're going to do some videos.
Which that's the next item. So let's finish signs real quick. I heard from Dan and maybe just signs for the Article 24. Other, Dan, Jim, you said 22. Do you think we should do signs for each of these, some of them? What's the collective wisdom?
So the, the, no, so the community center, that's the one point, that's the, we've got the million dollar grant pending on that, correct?
Correct.
Tracy, we should just put an umbrella upside down.
That's, that would be the image on the, right?
My husband sent me a meme on that comment. He was watching our meeting and I was like, that's not helpful, dear. No. I think our, I think the library signage is important. Barrington Commons Town Center, super important. I think we've got the support for the community center. One of the things we're seeing, everybody likes to weigh in after the fact, but somebody saying, well, why don't you just create it at Ramsdale Lane? And so I, I think we need to explain why that's not even, that's like five changes down the road if everything fell in line, so.
So I'm hearing just Article 24 in agreement with Dan and Rob Joyce, Jim, other signs? Just 24?
I'm happy with just that.
Okay.
Because the library's handling their own.
Moving on to videos. So absolutely, but the, a focus of our effort between now and March should absolutely be additional digital content to, to simplify and get information out about the warrant articles. At the strategic planning session, we talked about getting the select board involved in explaining these articles to residents like they're talking to their neighbors. So do you want to pick some of the articles that are maybe most important or most confusing and work out, I mean, we can write scripts, prepare whatever.
I think tax incremental financing is our major video focus. People do not understand. And I'm not saying we need to sell it to them, but I think we need to show them what other municipalities have accomplished with this. So if it means Connor, you get in your car and make a video of a building in, you know.
A lot of tax increment financing district projects are like water lines and sewer lines, so.
I'm okay with that, but honestly, I'm okay with that. Make up, make up, just, just, they need to understand it is just a vehicle to obtain infrastructure. It is a vehicle. And the one other thing that we're really hearing from residents, and maybe this is a responsibility of us now, people do not like the idea of the select board deciding what happens with those funds. So we need a recommendation committee formed for that tax incremental financing so that it's not five people making that decision, that recommendation.
Advisory board.
I, I understand, but that needs to be made clear to them. It's not clear right now.
Okay, yeah, it's in the warrant article, so.
Understand. It needs to be made as part of that video. It needs to be made clear to them that five people in a community of almost 10,000 are not going to be the people on the pulse of that checkbook.
Excellent point.
Jim, who's next?
I'm sorry. Is there any additional efforts that the zoning board's putting out in addition to the select board? So, you know, over the 44. So, you know, over the 44,1 articles.
Absolutely not. Zoning is not involved in any of what happens with planning board.
The question, and I haven't heard, but I don't know if planning board has even thought about that. Certainly haven't discussed it in the meeting.
Zoning wouldn't be allowed to. As a quasi-judicial board, they cannot.
By the five of us, and whether or not we handpick the articles they were most passionate about first, and then, you know, explain the rest as they come in. But you're going to get somebody that's probably can scroll all day and, you know, hey, oh, there's one information on that. Because I think if we just push a couple of things, being like, this is going to be the quote-unquote pushed agenda, but yet we're just having informational content out there, I think we should tackle them all if we're going to tackle it.
I'm hearing videos on all of the articles.
Yes.
And so let's just go into what are the ones people would particularly like to do to be up the rest.
I'd like to, I'll pick the TIF by the horns.
And that might be one that we want to involve, you know, multiple select board members on, or the ones that are really big or confusing.
Right, or multiple things, because I think there could be a whole video on buying the 13 acres and what that does for the town, which is sort of separate from.
I think if we could.
It's part of the TIF, but it's also, it's a long video.
I think you do have to break it down. You need to say, Barrington, this, yeah, I agree with you, Joyce, you have to break it down.
In addition, I don't think it's going to be a 10-minute-long video because nobody's going to watch.
Exactly.
You know, it's got to be under 90 seconds, and we've got to have our statements correct and have it flow like, hey, you know, it's warrant Article 22. You know, what's it about? How's it going to affect me? Or, you know, what's it going to do? Pros, you know, I don't know if we can do pros and cons, but I think if we break it down into that simple, you know, 30- to 90-second window with additional links down below, then, you know.
Which, we already have a list, right? Because the list that was generated for presentation at deliberative session was based on interest areas and areas of involvement in the development.
Does anybody remember that list?
I do.
Yeah, well, that was the one, so we can start from there. We can start from there and then build off. But I'm hearing that everybody's interested and willing to participate in.
Videos.
Making digital content.
So these videos also have to be non-advocating, right? Because the town is producing them, so it's reading the information. Hey, this is, you know, this is the mechanism to fund the purchase of the, you know, land behind Calipso.
Yeah, and we should be standing in the land behind Calipso.
Absolutely.
And/or if you slide in here and, you know, right from the flags, like, hey, here's Article 19 real quick. Here's a breakdown, boom, boom, boom.
I was going to talk way back of what Tracy said, but maybe we could encourage the TIF Advisory District to also make a video, and they actually could advocate, not us.
Yeah, but we don't have the membership of that yet.
I thought we had it formed.
Well, we have a group of interested.
The numbers, I believe.
We have said that's what we're going to do, but I think it's important in that video to say, and every single resident has an opportunity to bid their name to this particular advisory group and give your input on how those dollars are spent.
Good deal. Okay, moving on. Additional public forums or Facebook Live. So these were ideas that came up that, hey, you know, we just do the deliberative session. Should we do another public forum, invite the residents out to come talk about this? Or do we try to do a Facebook Live where we say, hey, question and answer, ask us about the warrant, you know, whatever? What ideas do you like? What do you want to do?
I don't think Live's a good thing. I think, you know, because we'd have to have a moderator on that and say if there's, you know, keyboard warriors out there.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I don't think that we, yeah, I have to.
Just by chance, one of us gets passionate about it, then that's going to put us in a seat we're not supposed to be in.
So we're going to skip those ideas. Other ideas, other things. We talked a lot about videos, explaining additional items.
So right now, every single time I see someone has, who is in support or not in support of something, but has a question regarding those, I am literally saying, hey, go to Ask Barrington or ask@barrington.nh.gov. If you have a question, your neighbor might have a question, and they'll publish it. So I think that that is the best way to begin to really pull the public into participating.
And what I would say is, especially in the conversations that happen within community forums, you know, I and we try to be responsive to make sure that we're making the information available that people are interested in. Sometimes that's pretty dynamic, but if you all see questions that you don't know an answer to, or the answer isn't on, already answered in a frequently asked question on the town's website through Ask Barrington, send me the question. You don't necessarily have to wait for a resident to send a question. Send me the question. I can get the information up on a frequently asked question, and you can simply reply to whatever conversation that's happening with, hey, you might be of interest to this information. And so we can.
Like, for instance, our CIP, I posted for a gentleman I saw online who was saying, I don't even know what particular person he wasn't in support of, but he felt that there was not focus on all the future. Like, oh, no, there's focus, read this, and then ask, you know, at Barrington. So I think that's important.
Right.
Seems to me something like the TIF where it's unanimous, that you can be very pro without being advocating. You can be, you know, the select board unanimously supported this warrant because it does this for the town. I, you know, at some point, like you've said before, we have to be able to have our political voice, too, and say why I think something is good, especially when it's unanimous kind of.
I think you can on, if we were on our own platform, you know, James Akosha, you know, select board member, but you can't post it to the town's platform, right?
Correct. Yep. Important distinction. Okay, great. So we'll continue working on all of those. We still have, you know, we have exactly a month to help get everything across the finish line. Voting postcard, we saw that, so look for that in your mailboxes. I wanted to share with you the details really quick about something that we are incorporating into the Barrington Kids Vote, which again is not just a exposure to civics for kids, but also an encouragement to get more people to the polls, right? If the kids get excited about something that they hear about at school, they'll drag their parents, you know, even in a snowstorm, to come out and vote. And the more people we get to vote, the better. Those decisions are representative of the community.
And I did ask TA McGyver if I had his permission to forward that to Allison Ryder, who's the new executive director for New Hampshire Civics, because I wanted statewide to understand that there's a way you're pulling more and more generations into the participatory process, so.
So we hijacked the idea that the state ran with for the I Voted stickers that you saw. They did a fourth grade program, actually talked to the folks at the Secretary of State's office and got their kind of passive approval. They thought it was fantastic. But the, so we have a design contest for kids in Barrington in four categories, all the way from the littles up to high school. They don't have to be hand-drawn. You know, we worked with a group from the Recreation Department to create a logo for Barrington Kids Vote, and they immediately, these are eighth, this was an eighth grader, hopped on a computer and was taking the ideas and incorporating them into a logo. So I'm really excited to show folks that once it's finalized. But anyway, so anybody that you know that can't vote, that wants to participate in the design contest, can do so. And the Barrington Kids Vote, so right now we have three decisions that the kids will make, that the ballot isn't finalized, so subject for additions. The biggest one is when trick-or-treating is. And so probably at the next select board meeting, we'll finalize what those options are. I did a little research. Interestingly, 84% in 2023 of towns and cities in New Hampshire trick-or-treated on Halloween.
I was surprised by that.
Barrington was part, so it is, it is a very much microcosm of the seacoast of New Hampshire, which is this 30th, which represented 12%, and then 4% on other dates. Some of those other dates included the last Saturday in October. And so right now, the three options that we intend to have on the ballot are the 30th, the 31st, and the last Saturday in October. We will include a write-in, and there will be a bold, underlined note that says that the decision is rain or shine. Kids decide that's what we're doing. The select board in the 11th hour isn't coming in and saying, oh, you picked the last Saturday in October, but it's rainy, so we're going to, you know, do it here, we're going to move it. Because what the select board is doing is we're delegating this decision. We identified that the town really doesn't have a place in making this decision. Trick-or-treats for the people, and so that's the biggest one. We're going to name the forestry truck, the new forestry truck. My favorite name option so far is Smokey Barrington, B-E-A-R-I-N-G-T-O-N.
When is the, is there going to be a silent auction for the current forestry truck? Does that happen?
It's going to be, it's, it's a recycled vehicle.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, the forestry truck, the plan for the forestry truck is to, we're not disposing of the forestry truck. I'm thinking of the tank truck. Once it's replaced, we'll put it out to the. Okay. The last decision is the deciding on the sticker designs. And so training opportunities, there's a, state is hosting a webinar series on the housing crisis, so I included the links to each of those from February 15th through March 14th. The local officials workshop that's put on every year by the New Hampshire Municipal Association, they'll have one on April 3rd and May 7th. The New Hampshire Municipal Association Annual Conference was moved this year from November to October, the 30th and 31st.
On trick-or-treating dates?
Right, yep. So.
Some reason for that.
Yep. Okay, and that's all I have.
All right, let's move ahead to old business. We have updated recommendation votes on Articles 24 and 44.
Which, we want to do that, so the recommendations are at a five. We only had four members at deliberative session, so just looking for motion and a vote to recommend Article 24, and then separately 44.
I know that we approve Article 24 as amended on the Town Center Tax Incremental Finance District, Barrington Commons Town Center Tax Incremental Financing District.
I'd second that. I appreciated the number of people that rushed to the front to give their input on how that was worded.
Okay, roll call.
Hardicoff, hi.
Gibson, hi.
And Shrek, hi.
Akosha.
Capella, oh, I.
Fantastic.
I know that we approve, recommend approval of Article 44, establish proposed Joint Advisory Budget Committee as revised.
Second.
Roll call.
Hardicoff, hi.
Gibson, hi.
And Shrek, hi.
Akosha.
Capella, oh, I.
All right.
Okay, so the Joint Advisory Budget Committee, the School Advisory Budget Committee has recorded and will include on the ballot a recommendation vote from their existing advisory budget committee on that article. So the select board, in drawing the line, said the, our advisory budget committee should only make a recommendation on those items which were of financial impact, which of course this advisory art, or this petition article, isn't. So the question to the select board is, do you want to have our advisory budget committee include a recommendation to have consistency with the school, or do you want to stay true to the original decision of only having them recommend those articles of financial impact?
I would stay true to the decision.
I would, I'd like to, you know, not have more people look at it.
I will abstain because I was at the meeting.
He's abstaining because we met with the advisory budget committee to update their recommendation vote on Article 24, and because I didn't want to have to have them meet again, I had them vote, and so we had the record of a recommendation vote, but I don't want that to be part of your decision-making.
I'm really nervous about scope creep on these things.
And that's why.
I think it can be offensive to allow scope creep and then pull back at another time on it. So I think a clearly defined role is important.
Well, I still see it as, you know, at our advisory budget, I mean, credit to them, I mean, I believe that, you know, they're very professional, thorough in the whole process, and I don't think that they would purposely come off rude or unpolite.
Yeah, that's not my intent at all. I actually, at the deliberative session, stated that I thought there was a lot that could be learned across the board from the group of people that reviews the town budget. It was a little offensive to someone on the school board, and I said I wasn't intending to make my praise of this group be a judgment against that group. I was simply stating, they dig down to every single line item, but that doesn't eliminate the fact that we've set a scope of their work, and I get nervous stepping outside that scope, because if they would feel strongly about something else, I don't want them to feel offended at that point that they're not included with a non-financial decision.
And to be clear, the status quo is that the select board had made a decision not to include advisory budget committee recommendations on non-financial articles. I only brought it back for you for additional consideration because there is one on the school side, and so that doesn't need to change your decision, but I just want to make sure that we're making decisions.
I mean, you could say that this involves them directly, and that is why it's included. I just.
That's where I'm leaning.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's, either way that you look at it, it certainly is impactful to them.
Well, and who doesn't think that, you know, maybe our budget committee can learn from their committee, too? You know, I think it's both ways, you know?
You're right.
And we do value their opinion, and so why not have their opinion since it does impact them, and in fairness, since the other advisory budget committee wasn't allowed?
Because it's a good faith in a working relationship.
I agree. I didn't realize that the other petitioned group that is impacted by this had made that. I knew that the school board themselves had not recommended it, but I didn't know that their advisory group had also weighed in on that.
No, I didn't quite realize that we'll vote on this on each ballot. We'll vote on it on the.
It's all advise, I mean, even if it's approved, it's not. It has to be agreed upon by both boards to even put it into effect.
Is there a time for you to get their vote to get it on the ballot?
I already have their vote.
I mean, I think we should do this vote now. So are we ready for a roll call? Or more discussion?
No, I think we need to change our perspective and allow that review to be posted as well from the advisory budget committee.
I think that's for hat.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion in a second on to that effect?
Sure, I'd make a motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Hardicoff, hi.
Gibson.
And Shrek, I will abstain.
Akosha.
Capella, oh, I.
Sir Merrick Garland.
Okay.
Can you give us the numbers?
Three to two not to recommend.
Oh, interesting.
Three to two not to recommend.
So the three members who voted not to recommend it are concerned that it isn't defined, that the, how the process would work isn't defined, and they expressed concern that the town advisory budget committee goes through a very detailed and thorough process, and their understanding of the school advisory budget committee's process is that it isn't as in-depth. So their concern was that if it was combined, the net result of the process would be, is that it wouldn't be as in-depth as they go now, which they appreciate that level of depth. They, at least two of the members that voted not to recommend it said that they think it's a very good idea and that the details of exactly how the process should work should be defined as step one, and then the idea brought forward of doing this. And so I think what the advisory budget committee as a whole discussed was, maybe regardless of what happens with the petitioned warrant article and the decision of voters, maybe that's an initiative that the town advisory budget committee can put some effort into and define, hey, if we were going to do this together, what would it look like?
I think doing an SOP off-season would be, you know, here's our standard operating procedure as we move through reviewing the budget, and if nothing else, that they be willing to share that information as a learned mentoring situation.
Right. So I think the sense that I've gotten from folks involved, and even at the school deliberative session where there was a lot of discussion, and dissenting discussion of the idea of a joint advisory budget committee, I think the net result, regardless of how the vote goes or how the boards decide to act, is I think a lot of people will be paying attention to those opportunities to collaborate and plan, and whether that involves the advisory budget committees being combined or getting together or not, or even just staff having more of a directive from their leaders that cooperation and working together is what's expected and what's right for the community. I think, you know, positives, positive outcomes will come from the discussions that have already been had.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, moving on to new business, hazardous industries. How can municipalities protect themselves? So, Select Board, Hardicoff, you attended a session at the Municipal Association Conference and are interested in bringing this forward for our.
Yeah, I really, understanding that water and air quality matters and. I don't know what the cost of an air study would be, but we are downwind from a very large processing area for waste. And I know that the odor is often talked about in social media circles. But I think in order to protect our municipality, what I came to understand from that session is that if we do not implement warrant articles in zoning in particular that protect the quality of water and air, we're really missing an opportunity to protect our residents.
My sense from reading the PowerPoint is that it's really difficult to do. And I wondered if they had presented model legislation, model voting?
So, they did. I don't have it, but from taking the session, I'm sure we could ask for it. They both recommended that and they recommended getting out in front of it before you have an industry that comes to you and potentially could be hazardous or harmful to your risk.
Do you think part of the problem with the air and the smell from somewhere? It was due to the amount of rain and the washing away of earth that was covering. No way to control it. Send it to utilities and do what they have to do without catching up from the.
Yeah, and of course their challenge, since we're probably, our future forecast seems to be much more rain than we. Hope to figure out how to be ahead of that.
We have though specifically, the municipality that is our neighboring municipality has specifically excluded the neighbors from discussions and decisions that they are making that can be impactful to Barrington. And so, I think it's important that there be something in place.
I, I think it'd be interesting to discuss this some more.
Does the master plan cover this?
Well, the housing.
Yeah, there's an.
I feel like there's got to be grant opportunities for us out there to, to explore in reference to covering the air quality and water quality studies.
So I think if the, if the select board is, has a consensus of it's worth our time and effort to focus on this and, and, you know, we discussed it at the last meeting, but I wanted to provide the backup information so you get an idea of the scope and, and you can weigh the importance. I think a valuable next step would be to engage somebody. One of the presenters has, you know, specialty in the area, but to evaluate our existing zoning framework and consider what changes could be made. So obviously the select board, you know, would then hand over whatever information that's gathered to the planning board and say, hey, is this something that you care about? And I, you know, I expect that, that's something that the chair could bring to the planning board and present as an idea. I had, you know, we're looking ahead to the 2025 town meeting when any, any changes would be implemented. But identifying an air quality study and changes that speak to that study and say, changes outside of this baseline are, are not what Barrington's interested in will take time. So, is there general consensus from the select board that we want to spend time and money on this? I can have a conversation with a consultant?
Well, in, in addition, before we hurry up and, and say yes to that, you know, it, look, look at the end, end goal here, you know, say it's, say it's Lee. And, you know, they're next door to us, they're not in our zoning rules, right? We can't stop them from having a, a facility that may produce, say a sawmill goes in and, you know, you get that stink through the air, you know, there's nothing that we can have in our zoning articles that's going to affect them, correct?
It's an excellent point and Tracy Hardikoff was just touching on this. So there is in-state law, something that's called the designation of a project of regional impact. And so, I don't know the, the statutes through and through, but the intent of that designation is to allow a project that has a regional impact to invite the communities in the impact area to the table for conversation. As an example, the Hard Rock development behind Liberty Truck was designated by our planning board as a project of regional impact, which triggers bringing in straff and regional planning and inviting members of the impact area in for the conversation. So what select person Hardikoff was mentioning is that the, recently the planning board in Rochester, one member presented the proposal to designate changes that waste management were proposing as having a regional impact, which would have triggered the invitation for other communities to participate in the process. I don't know the details intimately, but the, the specific, the specific change that waste management was before the planning board for was very narrow scope. It was like the change to a building. It wasn't topical to the expansion that they are also actively pursuing and receive some approvals at the state level for. And so, very likely, when the larger scope of expansion of waste management comes before the Rochester planning board, they would designate it a, a project of regional impact. But that's a decision for them to make. So there are mechanisms for that. Point being, we're not in the driver's seat if it isn't our community, but we can advocate for that in other communities if we're aware of projects. And if, if this select board wants to actively get involved in the, the expansion projects at waste management, then we could start formulating a letter to be sent to the planning board in Rochester that says, this is important to us and we want you to, to strongly consider a designation of regional impact so we can be involved. That would be a set, a policy decision within the purview of the select board.
Do you also suggest to our rep that they address this issue? It seems to me it'd be at least countywide, countywide importance.
The, the big concern is that the zoning ordinances happen at the municipal level. And if we don't do an air quality study as a municipality, you might as well not do the other work because if you don't have the baseline air quality study, you really don't have the data to say, we're going to require X, Y, and Z for advanced recycling, which is, you know, melting down plastic bottles and reusing them. If, my point in saying we should do an air quality study is, we don't even know, is that $200,000? Is that $5,000? Is that, we need to know that, certainly. And then from there, if you do not have the zoning ordinances in place preemptively in your, when you are approached by one of these industries, you have nothing to stand on. And so, right now, we're that 125 corridor again. We have plenty of land, we have plenty of open space. Most industries will do whatever is needed, whether it's air scrubbers or whatever it is in order to follow through on a project that they've put in place. But right now, we don't even have a baseline and we don't have any zoning ordinances to address this.
I mean, I think it bears finding out more information.
Okay.
I mean.
I'm seeing nodding heads. Danan?
Then we can decide on the road.
I just say, we ought to, we ought to do all that, but we also ought to go a larger entity like.
Well, may, may, maybe if we could reach out to, you know, the surrounding communities and see if they're already in the process of doing similar to, to us.
So, multi-pronged approach. Start in Barrington, evaluate an air quality study, talk to a consultant, get some pricing and some details so we can evaluate that further. But also look at the larger policy direction of neighboring communities in the county, looking for other ways to protect Barrington, of projects that don't just happen in Barrington.
And in order to not duplicate or waste money, we should ask if Rochester has conducted air quality studies specifically over that area. And that will give us part of a baseline to go with as well. And if what we find is there's absolutely no reason to be concerned, could we borrow your air study and is that appropriate?
Waste management maybe.
Yeah, they may.
Okay, I have direction.
And will, will you talk to Vanessa as?
I'll keep Vanessa involved in the process and I think once the select board gets it to a point where they have something they want to hand over to the planning board, we'll kind of have that crossover happen at, at the same time.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yes.
Great.
You know, the biggest concern is we will lose a case at the state level if we don't preemptively think of this.
Thanks for bringing this up.
Absolutely.
It was an interesting course.
Uh, moving on, select board member reports and concerns. We'll start at this end.
Zoning, we had a case for an administrative appeal of a vote of three to two. The administrator's decision was upheld. I hear that we're, will be rehearing, uh, will be hearing a request for rehearing on that in March. The housing committee is meeting Wednesday this week and will be going over, we've looked at a series of data points, very interesting work. We'll be going over the additional work and goals that the housing master plan should be looking at.
The, on January 27th, the Town Lands Committee met. That was after quite a hiatus since the homestead property. So it was really good to have the committee back. We actually met at the town hall, which is a new, new place for, for that committee. They, they covered things about getting the homestead property off the list. They talked about property on Tibbetts Road, Swain Lake Water District, timber sales on the Goodwin property, town forest expansion, Hard Rock Liberty Truck Project, Solar Farm. A lot of really good topics, a lot of really good discussion. I'm excited about the committee and glad it's back and. Energy Committee met this past, on the 7th, Wednesday to go over the bids as you saw the presentation. Conservation Commission met on Thursday, the 8th. I was not there for the 8th, but their, their minutes are coming out. They were just reviewing proposals. One, the most important thing from the 8th though, for the Conservation Commission is they did approve to go forward with an ecological assessment of the Richardson Dam project. And they'll bring that request to the select board to expend the funds to pay for that. So that was, that was one of the biggest things that happened. And no energy committee this week.
Little deliberative session you heard about, fighting. Transfer station meet Monday after next. Library. There and the ABC met Friday, whatever day.
Wednesday. I was just gonna let you go, but you wanted to make sure you got it in there.
Last week sometime, last week sometime. And voted three to against approving the revised joint ABC.
Forty-one to recommend Article 24 though.
Yep, that's right.
I, I wish we could explain that the reason it was three to two was because they want to continue the detailed level of work they do. I wish there was a way to like, explain that because.
We'll put that in the voter guide.
Okay, that would be great. I think that's important.
Rec Department, Egg Hunt, March 23rd with pre-registration time slots available. Summer camp is just about full. Staffing is also open for summer camp with a variety of opportunities. And that's what we got going on at the rec.
Love our rec.
All right, planning board, last week, probably the things that are most of interest are the Young Road proposal was deferred to March 5th. So that's when we'll hear that again. There was the Coot Farm design discussion continued. It's pretty clear that's the end of that phase of design discussion and we'd be looking for a more detailed plan before they come back again. And we approved a sort of a repurpose of the building. There's a fence company on 125. There used to be a restaurant there. They have a small portion of that for office and they're going to do coffee roasting. And they're involved with a company that adds Rest Baratral to coffee for health benefits. That's the ingredient in red wine and grapes that's.
With interesting and. You can have your wine and your coffee at the same time.
No wine.
No, no, okay.
And they have some CDB, CBD brands of coffee as well. So, public comments. Is there any public comment first here in the building? None. And online, any public comment?
Oh, Susan Gadiello's her hand up.
All right. I did not read what I usually read for public comment, but Susan, you've heard me read that many times.
Yes, I'm familiar with that. So, Susan Gadiello, 528 Franklin Pierce. And I wanted to just take a few moments in my role as library trustee. I hope that you all, as everybody else in town, has received a postcard in the last week, I think it was the end of last week, from the foundation, bringing people's attention to the library project proposal and inviting everybody to an open house, which is going to be this coming Saturday from 10 to 2 at the proposed site at the Frisbee Building. And the friends of the library providing refreshments and we're really hearing a lot of positive buzz. So we expect a good turnout and of course you all are most welcome to stop by as well. The other news from the library was the, the library brought back a very popular event that had not been held since COVID and that was just desserts. And we had nine bakers and for the first time ever, there was a tie for best baker. And that's based on votes from everybody who attended. The event sold out. But it was very successful and a lot of fun. So a lot of good energy going on there. So, that's I think all I have to offer, but thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Susan. Any other public comment? So closing public comment. So we'll move on. We do have a non-public session this evening for personnel and reputation.
Make a motion to exit public into non-public for personnel and reputation.
And Shrek, second.
Roll call. Hardikoff, aye.
Give's an aye.
Shrek.
Okay.
Capy, LOI.
Resumed public with like.
Adhere.
Aye.
Aye.
Scosa.
Capelloi. Thank you everyone.